I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, June 5th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. We are meeting in Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall, one at CAF Square. This meeting is being televised live on WCAT. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Woke, can you lead us?
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing no public comment tonight, and no delegates or visitors, I will ask for approval of the minutes of May 22nd, 2023. I'm sorry, a motion.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Payne. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes. May I have a motion for warrant SVW 23-21 in the amount of $162,564.27.
Motion.
Twenty-seven cents. Motion by Mr. Lutteiri?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Woke?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 23-24 in the amount of $932,036.21.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Woke?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Stay.
Mr. Matucci?
Stay.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Woke?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We had no budget transfers tonight, but we do have an update on the water heater replacement.
Yes, so in your packets today, you guys received two separate forms that myself and Mikail have been working on the past about six months. One of them, you received a current emergency project that we're going to have to be funding, either hopefully at the end of year funding, or probably one of the first purchase orders we make when we start the new year budget. One of the water heaters sadly went, and the good thing is that right now, we don't, we don't need to repair it until September, which is a plus. The negative was, we were hoping to be able just to seal the top and bottom, as we had done approximately, Mikail said, two years ago, but it was so rusted on the top, that combustion service and we had another person come in, pretty much said, at the time, it's not worth fixing anymore. So it's kind of, it's on its way out. And then while this occurred, me and Mikail, as you can see, we have a kind of a listing of items, we believe, that might be on the go over the next two years. And the reason why I believe it's important is, currently at the moment, when we're doing our, you know, our deficit, the budget and everything else, usually one of the first things that we don't budget for ahead of time is our extraordinary maintenance, which we usually keep around $35,000 to $50,000 approximately. And just from, you can see some of the big ticket items we've got coming up soon. We will, Mikail and myself believe we're looking at over $380,000 worth of big projects in the next two years. That's not including the replacement of the RTU systems that we were able to secure some ESR funding for, but I know that that's something myself and the town manager have been talking about. Those are big capital punish, capital projects.
Punishment is right.
Punishment is right. It's a punishment to our budget that we believe is going to cost us over $3 million total. Those are just capital project, but just the little things that we know that we're going to have to take care of. We've got two AC compressors, the ATC currently going down. We're only, we're running on one that air conditions the cafeteria area during, well, 21st century's there, and while the, the school days are hot during the summer times. So that's something that Mikail and I both know we have to replace very soon. And another thing that's on, currently on our agenda is the carpet in the office at the ATC is starting to, to give, which is a liability, in case anyone trips in fall. So we know that right off the bat, those are about $72,000 worth of projects. And the cafeteria at the ATC, we have the, the flooring is starting to dip from water, so we have to lift that ground back up, level it, and then change the pipe in there. So those are just some projects we know that we have on the way, specifically at the ATC right now, which seems to be having some, right now, issues.
So, and some of these, not all of these. So this one is an internal document that Mikail keeps and keeps us up to date on a, probably on a weekly, if not a couple of times a week basis. But it is different than the, than the larger capital plan that we shared with the town, with the town manager. So the school district has always had a capital plan, but really nothing overly formal. So I'm working with the town manager consistently over the last year, and his thoughts about long-term capital planning for the whole town. And they're doing, and Mr. Lutteiri could probably fill, fill in a little better if I miss it, but we're doing assessments of all town buildings right now, inclusive of technology townwide, with the hopes that we can get a very broad picture, and then narrow it down to what is, you know, a school and what is the town, and then looking at that from a perspective of being able to, to take on larger projects together for, for hopefully a lesser price. So we're not totally done with that yet, but we still need to keep our internal sort of, this is stuff that can't, you know, some things that can't wait, and things that can wait, and then taking a look at the budget and seeing how we can fund that. One of the bigger projects with the, the large RTU units at the Gorman Fort Banks, the town manager is looking at some green grants, some environmental grants to see, and if we can alleviate the cost on the schools' end, perhaps by getting, you know, some larger grant from the state, then we'll be able to utilize those ESR III funds, which need to be expended by the end of next school year.
Actually, September of 2024.
Yeah, September of 2024, which, but, you know, to encumber those, if we're not going to have to use them for the RT units, RTU units, to get some of these smaller projects done. So this is, and it looks overwhelming. It is an internal document that, that we pay attention to weekly, to try to get, stay on top of things. And this is a snapshot of what still needs to be done. And the ESR 1, 2, and 3 grant, really the ESR 2 and 3 grant, has supported a lot of other one-time building projects that we've needed to do over the past two years, to help sort of offset and catch up to all of the, the items that we know have needed attention, that we haven't been able to afford in the past. The longer you wait, the more expensive it gets. And so that's a catch-up that we're trying to do. So just butting in on that and giving you a little more information.
Any questions from this meeting?
I, I think this is great. And, you know, as a town and as a school system, we're trying to be much more proactive than reactive in a lot of this. And, and it's important, I think, for people that are watching to understand, like Noel just said, over $300,000. But the vast majority of this is going towards the Gorman and the, and the ATC. It's not, you know, the high school, you know, not to let people think like, oh, we're putting all this money into the high school. The high school has minimal, just upkeep stuff. And the high school's being maintained extremely well. And that's, you know, to the kudos of the, of the custodial staff and everyone who's really doing their job there. So that's very important to know, that the vast majority of these, you know, you're looking at two buildings that are now 22 and 23 years old, and just nothing out of the ordinary. And to be proactive like this definitely keeps the cost down for, for long term.
In the middle school and high school, albeit new, for us, it's new. There's a lot of things that are no longer warranted. So that's where, you know, you can continue to do the upkeep, but when the warranty goes on something, the cost associated with fixing it, and it always seems to go, just like your stuff at home, two days after the warranty is up.
Yep.
And so then the cost associated with, with fixing those items. But we have a very detailed work plan for the middle high school as well, that categorizes where all of those warranties are, and, and where we're at with the repairs and, and anything that's needed at the school.
Any other questions?
I, I will also reiterate Jim's point that I really appreciate the heads up and looking ahead, because I think that's one of the things that's super important, and that we need to be able to keep up on and anticipate what's going to be happening.
We have no subcommittee reports tonight. We do, we have a superintendent's report.
We do. So this is, this past week was a very, very busy week, as always. Senior week is, is quite busy. I was able to attend many of the events of the seniors, the senior walk-through, which we finally able to get back, where all our seniors walk through the Cummings, the Fort, as well as the middle school, in their caps and gowns, and get to see all the students, and they really hype it up in the buildings. The, the teachers love it, because they get to see kids who are graduating high school, who they likely had in kindergarten and first grade. So it's emotional, but I think the seniors like it as much as the, the little ones like it. So they had a great time doing that. It was fun to see them. Class night was amazing. We gave out many awards, and I'll give you sort of an overview of the total. And parents attended, kids had a dinner before, which is really fun, because the kids are, they're loose and they're having dinners sponsored, I believe by, I'm going to mess it up, who sponsored the senior dinner? It's not the PTO. The PTO provides.
The parent-teacher?
Parent-teachers.
Yes, and Tish Sullivan.
Tish Sullivan, who's been a staple for years.
An incredible job, and has done it for years and years.
Cooking, eating up food and serving kids. So that was great. They get to sign their yearbooks and, and chat for a while before all the parents come in. And students receive scholarships that are under $1,000. And then we had the promenade, which was also amazing. Parents started lining up, I think at about 4:15, for their kids to commode at 5:15. I can't say enough how well behaved and calm the kids were. As always, you always fear that that's the calm before the storm, but we did not have a storm. We left the promenade and went over to the airport and to the Hyatt, and it was outdoors in, underneath a tent. Lots of compliments from the staff at the Hyatt of, of how nice our kids are, how polite they are. That was great. The kids got to go outside and take pictures. It was cold, a little bit cold. It was definitely, for those of us who have hair issues, it was windy. So we were doing a lot of fixing of hair on the way in. And then the prom, ended with no issues but fun. So Mr. Crombie reported to me around, I think it was around 11:30 at night, that all was good, and, and the kids had all come back on the bus. And so that was great. And then came graduation, which is always, probably about three or four days of worry for Mr. Crombie and his staff. And then they report that worry to me. So we made an executive decision to pull it back by a half hour. We were going to start at 6:00. We watched that weather forecast every 15 minutes. And of course, on graduation day, I believe that just about everyone in the town of Winthrop is now a meteorologist and an expert in that area. We have specific websites that we refer to, right down to Mr. Capasso leaning over and whispering in my ear, while Mr. Crombie was doing the Fasella Scholarship, that he had exactly seven minutes and 20 seconds before it was going to start to pour. So I had my eyes on the fire chief, who was giving me to speed it up a little bit. Lots of sounds of thunder and lightning, which are not my favorite sounds. However, we had great support on the field with police chief and fire chief and, and others giving us the go-ahead. And we got to Mia Norris, who is the class president, who was about to turn into Taylor Swift during the rain. It started to rain. She held her composure equally as strong as she holds it on the ice when she's playing hockey. And she stood up there under circumstances where she probably knew everyone wanted to get moving. And she read her whole speech, and I'm so happy that she did, and so proud that she was able to, to hold her composure. And then they turned their tassels, and the majority of the people left and got to their cars, probably as the rain was starting to come down pretty good. I got to the ramp going into the high school, and it started to pour heavy downpours. But kids outside in rain, and having fun and enjoying themselves, was great to watch. For a general understanding, we give over $350,000 in scholarship money, and that doesn't count the Fasella Scholarship money, I believe.
No, I think that does count.
I think it counts.
Yes, I'm sorry. It does count. It does count the Fasella Scholarships, plus the additional scholarships given out. Over $350,000 worth of money, which was great for our kids, and we appreciate all the people who sponsor those. New people this year, we had quite a few new people this year. And our students are definitely grateful for that. Just a note on the budget. We anticipate the town council is going to be finalizing the appropriation to the school on the 13th, after hearing from the Finance Commission, whom I met with, and presented our needs and what our thoughts were, and sort of gave them a full-budget presentation about a month ago. With the new appropriation, calculations that are designed to reflect that 60-40 split that we have talked about in the, in the past, 60-40 split of the total town funds. We believe, or I believe in this moment, because our budget is forever revolving as we get through the year, and people either resign, and we're going to hire at a, a new level, I believe we will fall about $350,000 and change short of a level service budget, if that were to happen this moment. We have, as you know, put a freeze on the budget in April, so we are planning to look at the end of the year and the close, to see if, if there is additional monies left that hadn't been expended because of the freeze that we can use to offset that, that deficit. Depend, you know, that's if we go with the figure that we had initially with the 60-40 split. Now, that may change a little with the FinCom, we don't know. But once we get the final figure from the town council, I'll be sitting back down with the principals to look at the, the level service budget that you have all seen. And we'll go through that budget, see if there are areas that we can prepay, see if things have changed in terms of staffing, which they will, because we've had additional resignations, and we've put the amount for higher and lower than we would have, to try to get that number to come out flush. And then we'll bring that back to the school committee, for the school committee to review again, and have questions about. We'll show you exactly where we made up any deficit. By the time the town council votes, it may be less than that. And I'll be able to articulate that to the full committee, so that you're able to make your final decision on that. We're in the process of reconciling all of our grants and purchase orders, because this is the end of the year. So if people have purchase orders out there that are not going to be actualized, we ask them to close those, so that money can go back into the general budget, again, to help us close the budget for this year, but also if we're going to offset any costs for next year, to help us bring the proposed amount of money that we need, and the amount that the town gives us to try to close that gap. So with the school department now being responsible for benefits, we're eagerly awaiting a final document from the town side, because we had the open enrollment for health insurance. So the town benefits office is working on that. It's a lot of data for them to put into a system, to then be able to share with us what that figure looks like, and we can compare that to what we thought it was going to look like. And then, again, that may be a place that if it's coming in as less, that we may be able to move some money around to help again, if there is any shortage in the budget. Lots of stuff happening at schools. Last week, the second graders came over to the Cummings School for a visit. So sort of a transitional day for them, so they can get a peek at the Cummings School. They had the opportunity to meet the principal, hear information about programs, walk through the third grade, which is always exciting, see teachers, the smiles of the kids and the excitement and the enthusiasm was really neat to watch, as they think about where they're going to land next. A special thank you goes out to Officer Carter. He is our school resource officer. He ensured safe travel of the kids back and forth. He is everywhere. He is everywhere. He has places at night, I see him. I'm like, are you on the clock right now? But he does enjoy, and has a relationship with the kids now. So you'll see him at games, even when he doesn't need to be there, or at events like plays or curriculum nights. He's been super helpful to us. The spring music concert was held on Friday, June 2nd, at the Fort. The students were excited to show their learning and concert skills with all the parents, and it was well-attended. The Gorman Fort Banks has several specific grade-level events, and those are being communicated to the parents, and are also on the school's website. And the PTO is having their ice cream social at the Gorman Fort Banks on the 9th, from 6:00 to 7:30. That'll be in the cafeteria. And registration forms for that were sent home in backpacks. Parents can reach out to the Gorman Fort Banks if need be. And Ms. Pearson would like you to please join the PTO for their last PTO meeting of the 22-23 school year. That's next Thursday, this Thursday, June 8th, at 6:30 in the cafeteria or at the Gorman Fort Banks. Let's see. Mrs. Bowie, the school health nurse, she is our lead school health leader, nurse leader. She shared some really helpful resources about the state of mental health through the Mass Behavioral Health Helpline, information about that. She had put that out on the website for parents and sent directly to some parents, I believe at the Gorman Fort Banks, and the ARCT Cummings, and a different version for middle school, high school. The ATC, some good news there. The students in grades K to 12 throughout Massachusetts competed in the pitch challenge through the Massachusetts After-School Partnership and the Young Entrepreneur Institute. The students were asked to submit a 90-second video of a business idea. So each of those were submitted and judged, and the top three winners were chosen. And Haley Jones, who is a fifth grader at the Cummings School, and a student who participates in 21st Century After-School Program, she won the grade five to eight division. So we had a super celebration for her. And she submitted a video called "The Space Bubble." It was an innovative product that allows a person, this is like my total vibe, to create a six-foot space bubble around themselves to block out unwanted noise in operations. This girl needs to be the assistant superintendent. Haley said she got the idea when her sister was annoying her, and she was watching TV, and she didn't want to leave the room. So there was a virtual award ceremony on May 25th, and Haley got a $200 prize. So the teachers at the Cummings School were pretty pumped about that. Great idea. A couple of things at the middle school. Today was, there was a field trip to the Franklin Park Zoo. The DC trip is coming up, the 6th through the 9th, so tomorrow through the 9th, that's for the eighth graders. I've actually bet on that trip in my prior life as an assistant superintendent here. It's one of the best trips I ever took. I wish it happened in the fall, so we're going to talk about that, because the relationships the kids build with the staff and each other during this trip. And again, we are fortunate that a lot of our kids cross the hallway and go to the ninth grade together. But the stories that come out of the DC trip are always pretty amazing. Eighth grade field day is on the 13th, and the students and staff only. There is a grade six award ceremony on the 13th. Now, for quick public relations, I talked about graduation, with a couple of athletic updates. Emma Holmes, congratulations. She scored her 100th career point in girls lacrosse. She was a senior. And congratulations to the athletes of the month of May. Joe Romano for tennis, Lily Talent for softball, Nick Marchese for baseball. Congratulations to Nick Capuccio, who finished, finished third in Division VI State Meet for the 200-meter event. And congratulations to our track athletes who competed in the MIAA Track for States. Ariana Capuccio finished eighth in the long jump. Nick Capuccio finished seventh in the 100-meter and third in the 200-meter, and qualified for All States in the 200. And George Glorus finished ninth in the javelin and broke the school's record, which was a pretty big deal. Congratulations to the middle school students of the month for May. Grade six, Ella Servillis and Jake Lenesky. Grade seven, Audrey Vieira and Emma Sodov. Grade eight, Brianna Pinzon-Madrid and Grace McCurdy. Good job to them. And congratulations to boys lacrosse and tennis, both who won the NEC Lynch Division. And we have some all-conference stars in girls softball. All-conference Gabby Golden, All-Star Lily Talent. And in baseball, all-conference Colin Cessella, Cincella, and All-Star Peter Silverman and Zach Bogus. Lots of, we have lots of All-Stars. Boys tennis, Jack Osborne, Bitkwi Orin and Luke Owen. Girls tennis, All-Star Mira Ivanis and Alessia Kaluka. Boys lacrosse, all-conference Alex Danyo and Robert Rich. And the All-Stars were Jack Hayes, Welvis Acosta, and Michael Hogerson. And girls lacrosse, all-conference Emma Holmes, All-Stars Abby Holmes and Mia Norris. Track, all-conference Nick Capuccio, All-Stars Shannon Abbott and George Glorus. Couple of events. Winthrop Viking Football is hosting the Father's Day Annual Pancake Breakfast on Sunday, June 18th, from 8:00 to 12:00 at the high school cafeteria. It's a great take, $10 a person, and the pancakes are good. Miller Field Public Access Hours, this is a big, big deal. I'll say it again. Miller Field Public Access Hours will be open Monday through Friday until June 5th, yes, Monday through Friday, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, which is until June 15th. And then that's when school is out, so it's early in the morning when school is out. And then, uh, school is still in, and then when school is out, starting June 15th, it'll be 6:00 to 8:00 in the morning again, and then it will reopen from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, with the exception of Tuesday afternoons, which I'm not sure why. And we'll also have it open Saturdays and Sundays from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And I know that was a lot, but I got public relations in to my superintendent report.
Yes, well, it's great to hear all of the.
Yeah, there's a lot. And there's a lot more, but this was a busy week, so I didn't capture everything yet. So you'll get more at the next meeting.
Do we have any homeschool applications?
We do not.
I just have a quick question about the report.
Yes.
Lisa, I, I wrote this down quite, a little bit quickly. You said there's a $350,000 shortfall for a level services budget?
As of right now, yes.
And that is for the upcoming year?
Correct.
Do you have a figure for what the shortfall would be for the needs-based budget?
1.522.
Yeah, thank you. 1.522.
1.522 million dollars?
Yep. I can give you an exact figure. I didn't bring the exact, but that's the roundabout figure. Yeah.
Okay, so 300, I just want to make sure that's in the record. $350,000 for a level services budget, which is just.
And that's a general figure. It's probably a little bit higher than that, but it depends day-to-day on the shifting of people leaving and hiring. So when somebody, somebody resigns, that was at a $90,000 salary, and we put the new hire in at a $67,000 salary, which is master step three, that offset can change, you know, the, the overall deficit.
In your tenure here at, in Winthrop, have we ever approved, has the town ever approved a needs-based budget?
No. Not, not since I've, not since I've been here. I don't know how the budgets were presented in the six-year, I don't know, four years or five years that I was gone. But I have not had a needs-based budget be approved. And I'd have to go back and look to see if we've received an actual level service, or if it's been under-level service each year. And, you know, there's some, there's some concern moving forward after these ESR grants are no longer available. Those were one-time grants. We do not have a lot of salaries embedded in those grants, but we do have some. So the upcoming school year, there are five salaries that are in the ESR III grant, and those, that grant funding will no longer be available for '25, '26. No, '23, '24, '24, yeah, correct. So, you know, we'll be making some adjustments. But we, we did plan for that in terms of what those positions were, and the justification behind those positions. So that's, you know, that's a real, that's a real concern moving forward. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have appointments tonight?
We have no appointments. We do have one resignation. Janine Buchfan, who's an ESP at the Gorman Fort Banks, has resigned. She's going to stay with us doing some part-time work, but she could not continue full-time with no new retirement. Quite a few postings, the summer teachers that we posted for the CPC grant, it's a for-kids-only grant that we co-wrote, or co-signed and supported with for-kids-only. We're, they are looking for teachers, to hire teachers, that will be working in tandem with the school and supporting some of our needs while the kids are attending for-kids-only. The elementary IT teacher stipend and the data specialist stipend that we talked about adding, those two postings were placed. The elementary math coach. And then the summer program positions for, overall summer program positions for the ESY, the Extended School Year, for the programs that will be running at the middle school for academic support, as well as the Cummings School for Academic Support. Music teacher at the Gorman Fort Banks, an ELL teacher at the Gorman Fort Banks, and an ESP at the Fort. At the ATC, we are, we have posted the ABA technicians. So the ABA techs are the people that will be working in the classroom. And it says ATC, it's actually Gorman Fort Banks. Those will be the people working in the ASD classroom. That's going to be a K to 2 classroom at the Gorman Fort Banks. It's a much higher level need of student. And so these particular folks will not be part of the ESP unit. They will be separate, independent, outside of the ESP unit. And the reason behind that is, they will be working an hour longer per day, and they'll be working about six weeks longer in the summer. So their salary will be larger, because they're committed to the summer. So when you hire them, their salary over the 26 pay periods is in, is in, inclusive of the summer. So that allows us to make sure that we have them there. And they are also. them there and they are also, if you looked at the posting, you'll see the training that is required of those folks and we're looking for bachelor's degree people for those positions. We also put the yearly middle school intramural lead teachers, team leaders and club positions for next year, Brian's always way ahead of the game to try to nail that down before the first of the school year and that is all.
No Lisa's absence?
None.
Under new business, we have a vote to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Winthrop School Committee and the Winthrop Administrative Association, we will have discussion on that, but can I get a vote, a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Wohl.
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Lisa, can you, Ms. Howard, can you inform us?
So the Winthrop Administrators Association is comprised of assistant principals, CETs, which are chairperson of the evaluation team, so they're the special ed administrators in each school building that oversee the compliance and management of special ed services in the individual building, each CET is responsible for approximately 100 students on IEPs, maybe even a little more at the elementary level, as well as whatever programs are running in that building, so for programmatic evaluation and oversight. And then in that same unit is also the athletic director and the grants, the grants and after-school coordinated position that we have in the district and we say grants, the person who runs the 21st Century Program is also somebody who assists with writing and the management of the Title I grants, so there's Title I, II, III, IV, Title II, there's quite a few of them and there's a lot of management that goes into those as well as the ESR grants in terms of tracking the funding and making sure that our spending is compliant with what the state has agreed with us to spend. So those are the groups, they were on the same track as the teachers, the ESPs and everybody else that we've already settled, but being administrators, they were patient and waited until everything else was settled before they came to the table. So they are due for a contract that would be for this past school year, so contractual information for this past school year and the clock is running down, so what they had asked for was to settle their contract for this school year and then to re-enter into negotiations for either a two-year or a three-year contract moving forward. So the changes, it was a relatively, relatively small changes, some of it is language that has changed such as the Janus decision, which agency fees are no longer required, the wage was a 2% increase over last year, so they would receive that retroactively for this year, they had asked for one more sick day, they had 13 sick days, teachers have 15, so they asked if they could negotiate one more additional sick day so that they would have 14 sick days, that was agreed to, and then there's a list of positions, so if you remember in the teacher's contract, there are stipends that are listed and put into the contract that aren't necessarily, we're not bound to those, they're listed and put into the contract because that allows them to be eligible to have mass teachers' retirement taken out of any payment. If they're not listed in the contract, they could still get paid for them in the same amount, but it doesn't count towards their overall full salary in the, with the retirement board whenever it is that they retire. So it's the same situation with the administrators, there are a handful of stipends that have been traditionally given because we are in need of having people do some of these tasks such as the special ed out-of-district coordinator, the athletic transportation coordinator, that used to be a position that was cut, so now the athletic director does that, and safety care coordinator, the person who trains and does all the safety care training for the school and you can, you know, continue to read the list. So they had asked to have those positions listed in the contract for retirement deduction purposes and they understand that if there isn't funding for those positions, then they're not guaranteed positions, but if there is funding, and all of those positions are positions that are running this year and I would find it hard to believe that we could not have people organizing and running those. So they voted yesterday unanimously to accept this, so once they voted and accepted, I bring it back to the school committee for final acceptance and then once the school committee votes on that, we can provide them with their retroactive pay and then move forward to negotiate the next contract.
Just on the last thing, so we are voting tonight on this?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just the way I always stated it was confusing. Any, any questions?
This first paragraph on number two that's being added to the agreement where it says that they're eligible to apply for and may serve as coaches, advisors for after-school clubs and activities, will that affect the teachers' ability to apply for those stipend?
No. No, but that was, I apologize for not mentioning that, it's always been up in the air, you know, whether an administrator could, could do that or could not do that, we have had, you know, our goal is to keep as many people within the district, you know, coaching or running after-school programs, there are times where it's not feasible for them to do that, perhaps a principal may say, "Well, this particular season, I can't have an administrator", so their time is still their time, they still have to work the additional, I think it's 75 minutes beyond the school day and that timeframe doesn't change, so if that, if you were doing that after-school, as long as the principal is in agreement that you can come in early and meet those contractual hours for that season or for that timeframe of an after-school program, then it just was never in the contract before, so it was sort of, can they do it, can they not, so they asked to have that outlined.
Lisa, I am the chair.
You're the chair of this one?
Yeah.
Great. Did I put you on there?
Yeah, you did.
Any other questions? Mary, then can I roll public vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littary?
Abstain.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Speaker, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Public, any non-finished business, any public relations beyond what's already been?
Just, just the last up in your packet, I'm going to have CASA come in and probably over the summer, if not right at the beginning of the school year, to talk about the number of pieces of paper you have in there. So we do a lot of things and sometimes we forget to share out, we know we're sharing them within our school community, but sometimes we don't take the time to share, share out some of the good things that are being done. So over the past couple of years, we've really strengthened our relationship with CASA to really bring them into the schools. For a while, there was sort of a stigma on people participating in CASA for whatever reason, probably because it was in a different place and it still is, they still have some separate space, but some of the things that we found important and through Leanna Rizioni and Jen Reth and Amy Epstein, who are tremendous at writing grants, they have found some grant opportunities that if we would partner with them, could provide more services to our kids beyond just talking about substance abuse. College mentoring was a big piece, that's one of the things that Jen Reth had done this year and is going to continue to do, where she comes into the school and actually has a space where students can go and talk to her as well as their guidance counselors and she works very closely all this year with the guidance department, they've been super supportive to help kids learn about college application and essay writing and building a college list and filling out the Common App and it takes some burden off of our guidance counselors, but it also gives the students another face, another person in the community to be able to go to. They're also working with us to help get more opportunities for community service needs, community service hours for our kids, they do the middle school drop-in on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, which is also attended by the police department, so we're really kind of closing the gap of community services tied to the school services and intertwined with the police and fire department. They're running a homework zone, which is super helpful and using high schoolers to help do some of that homework zone, so again, putting some high school students in front of elementary and middle school kids and they are also beginning to offer jobs to students, so hiring opportunities for our kids to be able to come and work at CASA, they're running a field day and they're also offering a middle school mentor program. I just finished reviewing a pretty big grant that they are writing to the state that is going to be, if they receive it and do it in a partnership with the school, that they're going to be able to provide some additional mental health support within the school and a whole bunch of other really cool activities for kids that really focus in on supporting the mental health of the youth in the community. Again, the substance abuse piece is still a big part of what they do and having a safe space for kids who think differently, who need a safe space, who need a place to go after-school hours, so I just finished reviewing the grant with Amy and the girl can write grants and I was very impressed with what she wrote. We did tweak it somewhat because anytime the school becomes a partner with another agency, there's little aspects of the grant that we want to make sure that we're all staying on a 50-yard line in terms of equity and inclusivity, so we finished working on that, that grant went out and hopefully they will receive it. Being a partner is going to afford us their services, being able to provide some more support for our kids, so I'm going to have them come in and talk about that, I don't want to say they're definitely going to get it yet, so I don't want to go into a ton of detail, but if they do, it's a substantial size grant that I think would be beneficial in terms of the services that they may be able to help us with and we can always say, yes, this is something that we think is meaningful. The work that Jen Reth and Amy and Leanne have done with me over the past two years in getting themselves physically into the high school and the middle school has definitely built relationships with kids that are now kids are more apt to and willing to go and seek that support from them and don't see them as like this separate place where only certain kids go, now they're more and better in the school, so that's been a really, really big tilt for us.
Excellent. Any other relations? Yes, Ms. Wohl?
I just wanted, Lisa, I hope you can pass on to the staff, I think from all of us here, what a wonderful job they did all through this senior week, it's not, it's just, it's the invitations that go out to all of us and to the parents and it's, it's all the ability to pronounce every student's name, which I'm always impressed with.
Yeah.
It's, it's just a tremendous amount of work and the staff that take care of the fields and police and fire that are always there to help, I mean, it was really, and it was, it's been this way since I've been on the committee, but it's, please pass on to them.
I will. Our custodial staff and Mr. Serino were exhausted.
And the students weren't bad either.
They were great, they were great. Mr. Littary?
Yeah, just to, you know, graduation deserves a lot of pomp and circumstance and I'm glad we're giving it to them tonight too, but just to continue on what Suzanne just said, the graduation was amazing and to single out a couple of the kids, you had Kalen Barry singing the National Anthem, which was amazing.
Yeah.
And you had Ben Poo, the bala victorian and...
His speech was ridiculous.
Was incredibly good.
And made me feel like I needed to go back to school.
Yeah.
Like, wow, how can you write like that?
It was amazing. And Delia Paco, the salutatorian, who gave another fantastic speech and again, to Mia Norris, the class president, who under a lot of pressure just performed amazingly and, you know, another thing that just makes Winthrop special in so many ways is the senior walk-through and to do that and to have these kids go back and, you know, the kids get a kick out of it, but I think the teachers get even a bigger kick out of it seeing these kids and how they've flourished over the years, you know, from kindergarten on up, but it's an amazing event, the whole week, like Suzanne said, is just amazing and, you know, that senior walk-through is just a very special thing and I know the superintendent loves it and there were a lot of tears that day.
A lot of teacher tears, you know, that was, and that's, that's good for kids to see.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's good for kids to see emotion and without a mask on makes it even better, but you could see the kids looking up at the teachers like, "Why are you crying?" And we talked about it because we're sort of happy and you had some tears on some kids, some of the seniors were literally doing, I forget what you call it, it's just like little dance that they do, what do they call that? I don't know what it's called, it's called something, I don't know, my son will kill me, but it's a special thing, and then they're, they're high-fiving the kids and the kids were getting really loud and the louder they got, the louder the seniors got and it was just fun, it's fun to be able to yell and scream in school and be happy, you know, even for a few minutes.
Yeah.
Yes.
The eighth graders have a moving on ceremony next Thursday too, so now that the seniors have made room for them and they're making room for the eighth graders to move on up.
Yes, they are, it's going to be great, yes.
I want to just, second or third, everyone is saying I was driving around town on prom day and I didn't realize it was prom day and I started seeing all these women in these gorgeous dresses, young women, I guess I should say, and I dragged my daughter to the promenade and we just had a ball, but I also wanted to actually compliment the town on a ceremony this morning run by Lydia Edwards and attended by Tony Marino, where the pride flag was raised in front of the E.B. Newton School and just in terms of making sure that we're a community that is welcoming and inclusive to everyone, all of our town citizens, I was really pleased to see that event happen and I just wanted to say a special word of recognition particularly to our town manager and Lydia Edwards who put that event together.
Thank you, thank you for all of the efforts that went into graduation, seconding, everything, everybody has said it was incredible and I know that we were set up inside as well just in case.
We didn't tell anyone that, that's like the secret squirrel.
Well, I just was really impressed that, you know, that it was all covered and, and all precautions were taken and it's exciting to have these seniors moving along and it is, it does say a lot about our town, about the support that we have, it's extensive and deep and that means a lot.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Wohl?
Second.
Second by Ms. Littary. All those in favor?
Aye.
I propose to our extensions, we are adjourned.